I'd like to call the Berkeley Regular Meeting, the Planning Commission to order. Would everybody stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mr. McLean, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Buckler.
Present.
Kempner.
Here.
Miread.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Trotto.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplansky had a meeting she could not miss, so she is unable to attend this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
It's all moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Sorry.
Okay, approved by Mr. Richardson, seconded by Mr. Patterson.
No discussion on the agenda?
Any discussion? Okay. Bear with me tonight, I'm not normally the chairman, and I also happen to be losing my voice, so it's a double sword tonight, so we'll get through this.
Kempner.
Yes.
Miread.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
And Smith.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, the meeting of August 28th, 2018. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from August 28th.
Ms. Buckler, thank you.
Second.
Ms. Kempner, thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Move along.
We need a motion.
Mr. McLean.
Miread.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Trotto.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
And Smith.
Yes. Any communications tonight, Mr. McLean?
None at this time.
Thank you. Okay, out there, any citizens' comments on any, please comment on any agenda item or any item that is not on the agenda tonight, if anybody has anything to say. Okay, we won't have a line at the microphone tonight. Let's move to the order of business.
First on the agenda, we have site plan review, SP-02-18. Michigan State University Federal Credit Union is requesting site plan approval for a new building. The architects are here this evening, and they are here to discuss the proposed site plan and answer any questions.
Does the architect applicant, would they like to come to the microphone and describe the project, please?
Scott Maynard with Newman Smith Architecture. The credit union has purchased the former Fifth Third Bank on Coolidge Road, just north of Eleven Mile, and which has been vacant for some time now. And as part of implementing their brand, we've decided that it's best for the credit union if we start over with the site, with the building, and reconfigure it. And as you can see in the site plan, we're trying to keep a majority of the parking and the paving existing to remain, and it's just inside-the-curb-line effort. And we're also rotating the parking to 90-degree parking to increase the number of spaces from, I believe, 28 to 38, 36 with the bike rack spaces, to increase it to the zoning ordinance minimum, 38, that we require. The credit union, as part of their business model, they believe in fast service, and that's why we've increased the number of tellers inside of the branch to eight, from what Fifth Third had, which I believe was four or five, which is a pretty large increase. The building has grown as well in size, from about 3,500 square feet to 4,800 square feet. And around the back, we are going with ITMs, which is an interactive teller machine, which is very similar to an ATM, and it's not a traditional drive-up with the pneumatic tube. Other than that, the architecture is consistent with their new brand. As we move around the site, I understand that there's a couple of signs that we need to revise, and open for discussion about the monument sign along Coolidge Road, which is existing, that we're looking to reclad. Are there, I think that sums up the project?
Any questions from the planning commission?
I have one. What are you defining as usable space for the parking?
We're considering the front lobby space as a whole, the usable space of the building, and anything in the back-of-house area we're considering as utility space.
So how many square feet is that?
It's 2,750. It's on the cover sheet of the set.
Mr. Chair. So I have a little bit of heartburn with the entrance, well, the only entrance, it looks like, fronting Coolidge, and I suspect that's partially for security and partially to increase the number of teller stations, but you're already making people walk across that driveway for the handicap or the ADA parking. It would be, it seems to me like it would just be easier to kind of funnel them in that side door, or have a second entrance, or I don't know if that's a security issue or not.
The side door leads directly to the back-of-house area, and that's the employee entrance.
Oh, the further one, the one further back?
Correct.
I'm talking closer to the front, across from some of the parking sets that you have, unless I misinterpreted something. There's, isn't there going to be?
On the north end of the site?
Yes.
That's the employee entrance?
Okay.
Okay, and on the south, the double doors would be to the trash room?
Okay.
To keep the city bin inside of there.
Ms. Buckler, I think what you're looking at is the barrier-free ramp up the curb cut.
Right.
There's no door there.
Right, that's what I mean, like, why isn't there a door there? You're going to have to travel all around to the front of the building. That's my, I guess my question is, where your barrier-free ramp is, why isn't there a door that funnels right in?
As part of the function of the branch, security is important, limiting the entrances and exits to it, and as part of the zoning ordinance, it's required to have the entrance face Coolidge.
Well, there was like a second entrance for, you know, that would accommodate the barrier-free parking people, so, all right, fair enough.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, just to speak briefly to the parking, the requirements for financial institutions are based on the usable floor space, plus the number of teller stations, and stacking spaces for the ATM, or ITM, rather. Based upon that, we calculated that 38 spaces would be the minimum requirement. With the installation of a bike rack, they get credit for two spaces, and you'll note that there are 36 onsite parking spaces noted, so the minimum requirements for parking are met.
Agreed.
So is there an actual drive-up teller in this, or is this strictly, like you said, ITMs?
It's an ATM. It's an ATM with a teller in a call center, which happens to be in East Lansing, on the other end. So there's a screen, there's somebody that gets to see, and you can interact with somebody directly.
Do we interpret that as an ATM, or is that a drive-up teller window then? Because that has different stacking requirements.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I interpreted that as an ATM.
An ATM. So it's just two parking spaces per ATM, or two stacking spaces?
I believe that's the requirement, yes.
Okay. Well, a teller is eight stacking spaces for the first one, and six for each additional. Looking at your lighting calculations, were you taking into account any canopy lighting for the ATM locations? Because you seem like a little bit thin in certain areas for your actual foot handle layouts.
No, those were strictly based on the site light poles, yes.
You are a little bit thin, some areas you're at .7. Requirements for the ordinance is one-and-a-half-foot candles, minimum, five-foot candles, maximum. And there's a lot of areas that don't come anywhere near that. I understand with lighting, there is some ups and downs in foot handle levels, but there's, like, through the main runs of the actual roadways, it gets down to like .7, .6 in some areas.
Okay.
The other question is, is there shielding on the lighting?
Yes.
For along the house, okay, because it doesn't show that on the cut sheets.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shadle?
Along the same lines, I think the photometrics are showing increased levels along the north and the rear property line, north and west, yep, north and west. I think they're exceeding what the maximum allowable are. One of those is a residential district, which I believe is half a foot candle allowable.
No, max is five.
Yeah, Ms. Shadle, along the west, you're correct, it's a residential district, and the maximum at the property line is .5 foot candles. If they do exceed it in some locations, it's point, well, all along there, it's .6 to 1.1. So that needs to be corrected.
Sure.
And that, you know, shielding, whatever. And please extend the photometrics, I was going to mention this later, I usually talk first, but I get to talk last tonight, I can't help myself. Please extend the photometrics.
Yes.
Five, 10 feet into the neighboring property. You do it on the north and the south, it looks like, but, wow, that's the property line, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, they stopped it right at the property line.
Do extend it so we can see that it is zero at that point.
Mr. Chair, so that's not the only property line, they're also exceeding on the north property line.
There are a few points.
And then that brings up the larger issue, that we have a memo from Huber Roth and Clark that goes through a variety of some more significant than other issues with the package that was delivered to the city. But I think the overall result of their analysis is that it's incomplete and doesn't meet our standard, and so I'm struggling with even having, I mean, we can give additional guidance, but I'm struggling with the fact that we are sending other applicants back to the drawing board when they're bringing incomplete packages, and that we are yet again seeing an incomplete package. I mean, I know it's within our purview to do what we want to do, as far as approving it with a whole host of recommendations and changes, but this is going to be a lengthy list, because the Huber Roth and Clark list is just one list. We still have, you know, eight of us to discuss what we want to see as well, so. Throw that out to you.
Would the city engineer come to the microphone, please?
Hi, Roland Alex with Huber Roth and Clark. Yes, I'm sure everybody has seen our review of the site. Again, similar to previous submittals, we've been asked to review this as if it was a final site plan, set of drawings, which we have done. I'm guessing that the applicant maybe didn't understand that we'd be reviewing it at such a thorough set of eyes, but again, that's been our task in the past, which is what we did with this applicant. I think most of the comments speak for themselves. I guess the one thing that, in lieu of recent rain events, that has become highlighted in the city is meeting this 100-year detention volume, and although it's an existing system, there were no calculations provided at this time, that would be probably one of the bigger points that we are curious to see some additional computations and calculations on. I'd be happy to answer some more questions, but that's the.
Well, I have a question along that very, on that very thing. The building envelope is going to increase by 1,300 square feet.
Okay.
Does that raise an issue in your mind as to the adequacy of the existing stormwater onsite detention?
That's very difficult to say. I mean, obviously, more, the site was fairly impervious to begin with, whether it's a building, or whether it's pavement, you know, they have the same impervious value, they're both very impervious, they don't allow water to pass through them. So additional 1,300 square feet, was that offset by less parking, less asphalt? I'm not quite sure, I didn't do that calculation. But again, in doing a detailed calculation for their stormwater volume and the capacity, they would take into account the building's square footage, parking, the drive aisles, parking spaces, sidewalks. So again, calculations would need to be proven that the additional 1,300 square feet did not overtax the existing stormwater detention system. I just don't have enough information to be any more definitive than that.
Is there anything, other than the detention, because that's something I caught, is there anything in this letter? I assume the applicant received a copy of this letter?
Yes, sir.
I see it was only a week or so ago, so, but is there anything in here that cannot be resolved prior to the permit? The detention is a bugaboo to me. To answer Mr. Richardson's question, the site's pretty much impervious previously, and it is again. So I don't think there's a big difference as far as the percentage, I didn't do the calculation, I didn't add it up.
They're made out of a big percentage, but I wasn't provided the information of when the site was developed, so I'm not sure what standards they designed to when they designed the detention system. I think that a lot of these other things in this are, trivial's the wrong word, but are things that can be hashed out in final design. Again, I brought up the stormwater detention as something that may affect more than the typical cross-section, which was not provided, or some of these other kind of minor issues.
Well, all these things need to be provided prior to the permit. The question I would have, if I may, would be that we don't know, in fact, when was this original, the existing building built? Does anybody know?
I thought it was, yeah, like 12 or 14 years ago, when they moved that house down in that area.
It's a shame, but that's progress, you know, a fairly new building goes down, but that's progress. What I think that our engineering department would like to see, and also you, is we don't know what the standards were, at least I don't, back in '06 and '05, when this was being constructed and approved, compared to the stormwater standards now. We don't know what's there. That's the biggest item I see on this list. Couple of them are typos, some, as you said, are cross-section drawings. There really isn't a whole lot on here, other than the storm detention. I think we would like to have that calculated, obviously before the permit is pulled. I don't know if anybody up here on this commission, you know, we want to be assured by our engineering department that it's been taken care of, I don't know if that in itself is a reason to ask them to come back, and we can talk about that as the motion is. But other than that, I don't see anything major in this letter, so we can move along, unless anybody else has some comments. That's just my opinion, so.
Sorry, it's not for you, it's for them.
Of course.
I'll wait. It's for them, I have a question.
Mr. Patterson, go ahead.
I just have a question. So is there any ATM, or it's just ITMs? So if, or do you plan on putting, are these 24-hours, like if I wanted to come?
They're ITMs during business hours, and then after-hours, they get switched to be a traditional ATM.
Okay, and to ATM, okay, but during business hours, you would have to use the ITM?
Correct, and it would be extended business hours, because of the business operation to allow it to be in a call center. They can staff it with less people from a central location.
And then there's the two, and then one on the building?
Correct, and right now, we're only looking to install the one on the building and the next one over. The other one is for future expansion, if we need it.
Any more comments? I have some, but I want to hear from everybody else first. Mr. Miread.
So, on these ITMs?
Yes.
So it's kind of a cross between an ATM and a traditional teller, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm wondering if we need to look at the stacking as being eight cars? Because if somebody's pulling into that first one, it could be a lengthy, potentially lengthy transaction.
Yeah, they don't serve the same number of features as a traditional drive-through, but they do serve more than an ATM.
Okay.
And it's really more of an assist to an ATM than it is a true drive-up.
Okay, then that leads me to think that we need to look at our ordinance for dry-thrus and look at that, because this is kind of a hybrid, in the future.
Obviously, ITM isn't defined at this point.
Right, yeah, so it's something new, and we might have to look at that. The next item I have, that I have a question about, is you're showing these wall sconces. Do we have a cut sheet on those that we can look at to review? Are they shielded, are they, you know?
Yes, it's a shielded, I don't have a cut sheet with me. We can certainly provide that to the commission. It's a sconce that directs, it's more decorative than anything else, and it has a shield in front of it to direct the light up and down.
Okay.
As kind of the renderings have indicated.
That's what I'm looking for.
It's decoration more than it is functional light.
And then you said on the photometrics that the lighting underneath the canopy is not included in that photometric?
Correct. At the time that the photometrics were done, we had not selected the light fixtures yet.
So when you redo this photometric, we'd like to see that, as well as those wall sconces, we should be able to hopefully include that, too.
Yes.
That's all I have for now.
I have one more question.
Ms. Buckler.
So exactly what are the added services of an ITM versus an ATM? So I can deposit, I can withdraw, I mean, I can do a lot in my Chase ATM or ATM, but I'm, like, what extra can you do on an ITM?
I have to be honest, I don't know. And I don't think the credit union fully knows yet.
These are new.
Aaron is with the credit union.
My name is Aaron Bodell, I'm with MSU FCU, in the facilities department. This is something that we are kind of exploring. I think right now, it is, the way I would look at it, it is an ATM, but you can speak to someone. We're trying to determine what services might be beyond, you know, your traditional deposit, but you're able to speak to someone and see a face, and if there are some additional things, questions that you have on your account, then we would be able to provide that. And then obviously, you can deposit a check, you can take money out, but this is really, this is actually very new for us, and we're in discussion right now to determine what, you know, how we're going to do this, and, you know, how many of these things, so this is really a trial for us, so.
So it's basically an ATM with a face on it?
Currently, yes.
A smiley face, right?
Ideally.
Ideally.
Still a teller.
Mr. Chairman, is there an option during the daytime when that smiling face is available to use it as an ATM, though? Or is every transaction interactive?
Yes, you can use it as an ATM, as I understand it, but you can also ask for assistance.
I think something we need to consider is asking for assistance is going to take a longer period of time, and therefore will affect the stacking. And I think without knowing that at this time, it's very difficult to agree to the stacking of an ATM alone. I think that's difficult to know without knowing what those services are going to be, but clearly, interacting with someone is going to take much longer period of time than the traditional ATM. Therefore, I have concerns about the stacking that's currently being proposed.
Any comments from this side of the table? Okay, I have a few things. Let's go through it sheet by sheet.
Okay.
As I mentioned earlier, several of us have, the stormwater, we'd like to know the capacity of the existing system.
Sure.
And that it complies with the requirements of the current.
Of course.
And that's obviously be reviewed by HRC.
HRC, yes.
So that's a big concern. I'm going through my sheets, a lot of these have been discussed. Wow, you're really putting the transformer in the northwest corner? That's a long way.
The existing one had it behind a screen wall, and as part of growing the building in the north-south direction, there was no space to do it, to be able to get the additional parking onsite.
Long way for your feet, but it has to be, it has to be. Mr. McLean, has there been any comments about the radiuses on the inside corners as we drive west on the north side and turn between, I didn't see anything from our city engineers, I didn't see anything from the fire department regarding the radiuses of those islands at the end of the parking, the intermediate parkings, but road parking spaces.
I've not seen any issues, but I can have public safety, you know, verify that there's not an issue, but I don't.
I'm not saying they are, but there is, but I just, they seem pretty tight, and maybe there's enough, with the 24-foot drive, maybe there's enough room to get the equipment through there, but that's just something we want to make sure. If you would, identify your barrier-free spaces a little bit better. I see along the north side, 16 spaces at nine feet. Well, that's not exactly what it is. You have 13 at nine, then you have a couple eight-foot barrier-free spaces, and there's an excess aisle, and then another free space, but I'd like to have that a little clarified a little bit, just so we have that.
Those are eight feet apiece, between the.
All four of them? You have two spaces, aisle, and then on the very east end, another.
The very east end is nine feet, is a traditional space. Yes.
Okay.
And the math all adds up.
Yeah, it adds up.
To eight feet, eight feet, eight feet, and then nine for the remainder.
But for the record, when you resubmit, whether it comes to us or just resubmit with, to the staff and to the engineers, I'd like to see that cleared up.
Understood.
Okay, this isn't really any business of ours, what the heck is a wellness room?
It's for nursing mothers.
Oh, okay.
As well as diabetics to do their shots. Some clients use them as prayer rooms.
Okay.
Any number of types of rooms, any number of uses. It's a little bit more politically correct to call it a wellness room, rather than a nursing room or a mother's room.
Okay, just curious, I'd never seen that term before at a bank.
Yes, it's a comfy chair, a table, and a refrigerator.
So you will allow customers in the inner sanctum here to go to the wellness room?
No, it's for employees.
Oh, it's only for employees?
Strictly for employees.
I thought I heard for customers, okay.
No.
Okay. I was going to say, on the elevations, I see a screen on top, and I see the metal there, is it a flat pan, or is it a corrugated metal? What is that?
It's, right now, we're proposing a louver. It's a 50% open louver with zero sightline through it.
Okay, zero sightline, okay. Now, the metal on the canopies, on the canopy, is that the same color, is that, what would that material be?
That's going to be an exposed steel at the moment, just a raw channel that's painted the same color, dark gray.
It's a big channel?
Yes, 18-inch.
Okay. Painted steel? We talked about storm roof conductors. In fact, HRC astutely noted that, uh, those have to be shown on the plan. So, I imagine you have internal, there's a flat roof as opposed to the previous building. So, uh, uh, they will be internal, be tying directly into the storm retention system?
Correct.
You're shaking your head.
We recommend that they're not tied directly into the storm roof system.
So, you'd, okay, you'd rather have them splash to grade?
Rather splash to vegetation if possible.
Okay.
But that's probably not possible.
That's not, yeah, you're right with, uh, internal, so.
We have a, we have a concern with that internally with, uh, winter conditions and sidewalks.
Absolutely.
And, and ice and all those kind of things.
Right. We don't want it, uh, uh, we don't want it directly into the storm system, but what about directly into the detention part of the storm system? Okay, that's what you're looking for, right? Okay.
Rain gardens. You could do some vegetated rain gardens and.
Well, when you have an internal drain, it goes underground.
No, I didn't mean down the middle, I meant on the, on the outside.
There's no gutters on this building.
Yeah.
It's a flat roof.
And those are the only landing areas on the north side.
You brought your sales materials? What the heck? I see these, these, uh, uh, curtain walls, glass and aluminum frame. What is the detail at the top? You got a very thin detail at the top. Just curious, at the roof, at the coping?
Yes. It's spandrel glass at the top.
That's good, that top piece of spandrel?
Yes.
Okay.
And it tied, the, the flashing ties directly into what would be the, uh, what would be the, the top mullion?
Okay, as long as it's spandrel, we're fine. I was just curious if it was doing something with the ceilings or how you're gonna build that. I want to know how you were gonna build that, so. Okay? And signage is a different permit, and we'd like to, uh, you to follow that through with staff, make sure that's all coordinated.
Understood.
And we talked about the photometrics. On your detail, showing the 20-foot light standard on top of a two-foot post, or a two-foot, uh, base. I think the ordinance says, Mr. McLean, 20-foot total? I believe it says.
I'll double-check that, but I believe you're right.
So, I, I think we, in that case, we need 20-foot total, if I'm not mistaken. So, it'd be an 18-foot standard on a two-foot base. If that is in fact the, uh, they'll be in the report back to you. And that'll play into your recalculations of the, uh, of, of the photometric plan.
Of course, that's a big deal.
And please, and please extend it west ways. Cause that's, uh, the residential is more important than north and south, which is other commercial type uses. So, please do that. Okay, is that, you know what I'm looking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have. Does anybody else have any comments, or anybody in the audience would like to speak? Okay, anybody else?
Well, I don't know if the architect had a chance to run through the, uh, exterior finishes. Can you briefly summarize for us, uh, the uses of those finishes that you're anticipating?
The, uh, the paver cement siding panel is what's gonna be around the entry element.
Okay.
This is gonna be the color of the, around the entry element as well as the painted melt on the, uh, steel and the screen wall material. The white is really more for, uh, what's gonna be the underside of the canopies as well as the ATM dry lanes. Our glass, uh, we're gonna go with the dark bronze on the.
Curtain wall system.
And then we have our green and red brick, which is the predominant materials.
That green is a glazed brick.
That's correct. Yes. It's green for pretty obvious reasons.
And, and the red matches their brand.
You don't have enough white in your scheme.
Remember, everybody's looking up at it.
Is it thin brick or is it actual brick?
It's brick.
Okay.
What's the framing on this? Is it steel? Steel studs or wood?
It's steel with metal studs.
Oh, you are going metal, light gauge?
Yes, light gauge, well, heavy gauge. They're, they're load-bearing, well, load-bearing for the exterior design loads.
Okay. Any more comments from the planning commission? Can I entertain a motion?
Can I bring something up real quick?
Please.
We had talked about the existing monument sign along, uh, Coolidge Road. It's, as it stands, it's non-conforming, uh, because of the gateway district for multiple reasons. One being it falls within the setback, and another, uh, monument signs aren't allowed. I believe when the building was built, it had a different zoning, and it was conforming at that time. Our, based on our submission, we're looking to re-clad that sign and leave it as is. So, I would, we're trying, you know, I had a great discussion with Mr. McLean that it was gonna be up to the commission whether or not that was gonna be allowed or not. So, we would hope we can get direction on that this evening. Let me clarify, Mr. Chair, um, that would have to go before ZBA. Their options would be, when the, when the existing building was approved, it was zone local business district with, your monument signs were permitted. You know, obviously, now it's, it's non-conforming, and their options would be to remove the monument sign or seek a variance through the ZBA.
Any discussion on that? Any comments? I think that would be the right approach.
Yeah.
ZBA, because yes, the zoning did change, and unfortunately, that's one of those, um, items that changed along with it, so.
And with the non-conforming signs, we, we don't allow for, you know, like, face change. Only very minor maintenance is, is permitted on, on non-conforming signs.
This isn't a renovation of the building. They're tearing the building down, a building into building, so kind of all that's.
I was just gonna say, if this was a, a re-cladding of the building or a facade change or something, we could probably make a judgment on that.
Only in, only in situations if, if the sign is damaged, you know, and it's, there are pretty strict limitations on what you can do with, with non-conforming signs.
Okay.
I, we're gonna get rid of it.
That works too.
Problem solved.
We have schedules to keep for, uh, zoning ward of appeals.
Yes, you do, I imagine you do. Is this the first, um, you mentioned the ITMs, and I've heard a couple of other comments. Is this your first one of this design scheme? Your first, uh, experiment, so to speak?
Hopefully not an experiment.
I understand. Oh, I'm sorry, would you please go to the microphone? I, I apologize, she just said something earlier.
So, we wanted to freshen up our brand. We have a partnership with Oakland University in addition to MSU Federal Credit Union, um, or MSU. So, we are wanting to kind of freshen up our brand, incorporate, um, OU into some of our, our branding and our logo signs. So, we're doing some kind of a freshen up of our locations, so.
The only concern I would have, and I think it was up here, is about the, the stacking of the ATM. Nobody knows. Does anybody have any real concerns about that? It's a different animal. We don't know, they don't even know.
Well, I don't think, if, if we don't have a, a standard or regulation, then, then we have no basis to.
Exactly.
Deny the, uh, request on, on, based on any of those kind of concerns.
We don't want to turn into a, and I don't think it will, but we don't want to turn into a Starbucks on Woodward where we have a link blocked on Woodward. You know, we just don't want that kind of a thing to happen. If you're familiar with Woodward 13 Mile, we have a little issue there. Not in our town, not in our town, but yeah, neighboring town. But those who use Woodward do have an issue. Okay, that's one we'd hear. Thank you.
Just real quick, what is the ordinance for stacking or parking requirements for an ATM?
Two.
Is it stacking or is it parking?
Stacking, two stacking.
Stacking?
And for a regular drive-through, I think it's eight, right?
It's eight and then six for each additional. Now, you have nine spots, so you do exceed the stacking requirements for the ATM?
For one.
Just going by reference, you do exceed the stacking requirement for an ATM.
Right now, we're looking at three each.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's two, yeah, two per, two per ATM.
Two per ATM, yeah.
Mr. McLean, add that to our list of, uh, refinements when we get back into our ordinance. There's one more. Something every month. Hey, folks, I can't make the motion tonight, so.
Mr. Chair, I'll give it a try. I move that we, uh, approve a site plan O218, um, subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the City of Berkeley's engineering and site plan requirements as determined by the city's consulting engineer, uh, and, um, submission of revised site plans reflecting the comments of the, uh, commission to city staff for, um, final approval.
What comments might those be?
Uh, the photometric plan.
Okay.
Uh, should be revised. I am not aware of any other, um,
Light pole height. I did look up the light pole height, then it does have to be 20 in total, so.
Right, okay.
That's.
20 maximum light pole height?
20 maximum, um, um, light pole.
From grade?
Two foot, yeah, from grade, two-foot base, 18-foot pole.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Trotto, second. Any, uh, further discussion?
I'd like to see us add that, uh, that provide cut seats of all exterior lighting.
Think they have one of the parking lighting, but you're right of the decorative lighting.
Yeah, of all the decorative lighting, the lights in the canopy.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
I was just.
Ms. Shadle?
Um, I'd like to see some, just some comments from public safety, just to ensure that they've reviewed the documents and don't have any comments.
When they do revise the photometric, just make sure they include canopies, or any exterior lighting out there.
Anybody else? I'd like to add one, we, you mentioned the HRC, uh, the engineering letter with special care to the, what's happening with the existing and proposed detention.
Yep.
That's, that's, the rest of them are, uh, they're fairly readily achievable, but the fact that we don't know what's underground now, and, uh, standards may have changed, and we might have an issue in our town occasionally with some storm water. So, um, that is a special care with that.
All, all of those additions are acceptable to the maker of the motion.
Second or?
Second.
Okay. Do we have a vote?
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Buckler?
No.
Kempner?
Yes.
Miret?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Still some work to do, but good luck on the project. What's your schedule, assuming everything goes fine? Good timing, okay. Good, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. McLean, would you read the, uh, item number two, please?
Item number two is the revised draft of the proposed public participation plan. Provisions were made to the draft based on feedback received from the planning commission at the previous meeting. Additions are, are made in red, uh, items removed are, got the strike-through markings. Language was added to differentiate between the, uh, the types of development and, and the tools that we might use, you know, for communication, the appropriateness. Some flow charts for various types of development were, were also included in, in the revised draft.
Thank you. Any comments from the planning commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Richardson.
Well, my, my comment really can be summarized this way. The draft two is a much more complete, um, work product, and I, I think a much more satisfying one. However, um, there's still a question in my mind about, um, how the communication effort is initiated with respect to particular projects. Basically, uh, who decides what tools to use and when? I think this plan is, summarizes the tools and summarizes the projects, but it doesn't answer the question I just posed. I, I certainly understand that there, this is not one-size-fits, fits-all. You can't write a formula in here that will tell us automatically what happens, uh, anytime a project comes along. I'm not looking for anything like that. I, I would comment that I think it needs a little more clarity as to who is going to, um, decide to employ these, uh, additional tools. I'm talking about the tools that go over and above the statutory requirements now, uh, and, and when. I mean, for example, is it the planning's commission decision to, um, uh, employ, uh, to, to commission a survey and, uh, have a, have a charrette, if you pronounce it that way, uh, further and down the line? And I think past practice, we, we, we appear know the answers to some of those questions. I just think they should be in the plan. In terms of timing, that's a little trickier. But I would like some words in here about, um, when decisions get made about a communication strategy. And I say that because of the tremendous community concern that we have about, in this community, about informing people, uh, and not taking them by surprise, and not getting them involved long after, um, the planning process has been started. So, I'd like, I'd like to reference, even in general terms, something like a decision will be made as to, um, what tools to employ at the earliest, um, point in the process that's practicable. Language like that might be acceptable, but I, I don't think you can ignore it. I think there needs to be something in there about this.
Ms. Buckler?
My comments are mostly on pages 11 and 12 related to the basic methods versus advanced methods, and on, and onto page 13. So, you have in basic methods, you know, uh, some of the communication outreach, and then you have open houses. And then, as advanced method, you have community workshops, and you have, you know, things like plan unit development and large-scale development as, as always on page 13, requiring these advanced, um, communication methods, which, you know, it really depends on the development and the PUD, whether, um, I mean, certainly a charrette, a focus group, or survey. That's gonna have to be, you know, up to the developer. These are generally private developers doing this work, and yes, they're coming into our community, and yes, we want to have a say in it, and that's what public hearings are for in an open house. But the reality is, you are bootstrapping a requirement to, um, you know, somebody who's gonna spend a tremendous amount of money in the community on a method that may or may not be beneficial, depends. Like, sometimes a complicated PUD, sometimes we have a very simple PUD. I'm, um, you know, whether or not people like it or dislike it, the, the, um, Oxford, uh, Harvard Commons was a fairly simple PUD. I mean, it took several meetings, but it's townhouses. There were some, you know, we had to jigger around some things to make sure everything fit in the space, but it wasn't highly complicated, and the owner wasn't going to do anything but townhouses. It was, so, to have a charrette, a designed charrette on it, or a focus group, or a workshop, it, that's probably a, a bit on the stretch, but it needed to have a PUD to make it work. So, I think we have to be careful on, you know, specifying and setting the expectations of the community that something like this will always happen. I mean, even though we, we, we all want to. I mean, even though we, we all want to see the communication, we also want it to be value-added, beneficial communication that advances the project, so.
Perhaps I had a little too much of the most recent PUD in mind when I was drafting this language.
And that's okay. I just think that there's a little too much specificity in here for, because it just becomes, it now becomes a, a manual, and that's not what this is intended to be. This is intended to be kind of a guidance, more than like, you must do X, Y, and Z, than we might as well just have some checklists and not have any verbiage around them.
If, if I understand you correctly, on page 13, the chart, table one, table one, the planning unit development, there's an A there, advanced, always.
Mm-hmm.
That bothered me. That's, that's what you're applying, sometimes.
Yes, yes, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's definitely, you know, because of how and what he, and what Mr. McLean defined an advanced method as, these four items, surveys, focus groups, charrettes, and community workshops. I think these are all fine tools to use, but I don't think they're always going to be applicable.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Yep.
So, and with that much specificity, you've set the expectation of the public, because if I'm the public, then if I don't, I'm going to be like, I want a charrette, because you said it's always going to be done.
Right.
Well, going back to.
Or it's going to be one of the things that's always going to be done.
Going back to my comment, I, I think I, you and I are on the same page.
Yes, we are.
But I would, I, I would say less specificity, maybe that's the way I put it. Regardless.
Simplify.
When you say always, and then, and then you don't, you don't specify which of the four advanced tools you're, you're talking about, you, it could be interpreted as saying you'd always require all of them, which we know we're not going to do. So that gets back to my comment that I'd like, I'd like a, I'd like a discussion in here about when the tools are selected and who selects them. And I know that will have to be in fairly general terms, because we're not going to do a one-size-fits-all manual, but, but we need, the public expects fair notice, and I think we need to convey that expectation in this document.
The top half of this chart are usually, I don't want to say developer, but they're project-driven, the first five, all the way down to rezoning. The city may want to do some rezoning at some point, but generally, it's a project-driven item. The, the, the lower three, four are really policy items that we, we initiate. Now, I can understand always providing advanced methods, whatever they are, for those, but I don't see any reason to, for planning unit development to say always, because that's, and I think I agree with both of you, exactly what you're saying.
Question.
Depends on the scope.
Well, that's why it's sometimes.
Right, there has to be a trigger, Mr. Chair.
If sometimes is the right word.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm certainly not trying to limit public involvement in any way, shape, or form. I'm just saying that if you put it in this document and you put this much specifics around it, there will be a general expectation.
Right.
That it is upheld and, and, and provided. So specificity belongs in an ordinance, which we'll talk about next, there, where there's lacking specificity, but here, I think this needs to be a blueprint, a fluid blueprint, a blueprint of how we will evolve our communication program, for lack of a better term, on these types of projects. Also, technology is changing. This will, you know, right now, in 10 years, there's going to be people looking quizzically upon it and wondering what Facebook is. So, because 10 years ago, did we really, I mean, it was, like, would we have ever thought we would have used it in this capacity that we use it? It was just to share pictures of grandchildren, or, you know, whatever. I'm just saying, it, it needs to be generalized a little bit more with ideas in there than then, than that can be used by the community to say like, hey, look, this seems to be a good fit for a charrette, versus, let's force a charrette on this poor developer, sometimes where it's not necessary. Other times, it will be necessary, but if it's private dollars, I'm not really sure there's, that's what he wants to sit through. Okay? But if there's any, a lot of public interaction, like a large-scale development does not necessarily mean that there's rezoning, it does not necessarily mean that there's any kind of public-private partnership involved in it, it could just be, I've cobbled together a lot of land and it meets the zoning issues for what I'm proposing, and now I just need a massive site plan. But we may have to make them, you know, this document would make them hoop jump through a lot of things where it's not necessary, but in other cases, we want their, we want more input from the public, or the community.
Any other comments?
I tend to agree with both. You don't want to hold every project to an always, but I think the community needs some reassurance that they will be notified early in the process. So if you change that to a sometimes, some other way needs to be noted that something like a PUD still involves early communication with residents that this is what's going on.
Well, and the advanced methods.
But the, the most recent PUD, we found out about the same time the residents found out about it, when it was brought before us.
There were still a number of people who, I don't thi, I mean, I think the city has gotten better about posting things online and all of that, but I feel like there were a lot of people, especially a lot of people right around there, who did feel like they were being caught off guard. And, and the same thing with Harvard Commons. It was like, all of a sudden, and it, it was, you know, with the city posting and all of that, it's gotten better through the years since the Harvard Common days, but I do feel like that people don't always feel like they're being notified of big things that could conceivably affect them and their properties. And notifying doesn't hurt anybody.
I, I.
Mr. Patterson.
I just, I really like the document. I think the flow charts help a lot, keep residents and us on task in where it goes, and I thank you for all your work you put into it.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shadle.
Just a question about, it appears that the first goal about moving beyond the status quo was eliminated, and I just was inquiring as to the reasoning for that.
I had some discussions with, with the chair, and, you know, and we discussed, you know, we need to have realistic goals, and she felt that perhaps that was a little bit overly ambitious. You know, certain things, like your, your regular, you know, run-of-the-mill site plan, if there is such a thing, doesn't always require, you know, you know, moving beyond the status quo.
And.
And it really depends on, on the type of development.
It does, but I, I guess I would like to, to maintain some sort of statement in here that, that really, I mean, part of the reasoning for this is to increase the community involvement, right? And that is kind of moving beyond the, what some people perceive to be the status quo. Again, perception is reality, right? So maybe that statement was a little strong, and I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I sure would like to maintain one of the goals that we are reaching out more than what, you know, folks perceived the, the status quo in the past to have been, and that that is one of our goals. I mean, that's, I believe that is one of our goals.
To go beyond the very minimum.
Absolutely, and to incorporate what, you know, our neighbors have to say.
Anybody else?
I have a question on page five. Why did we cross off the to create, maintain the Berkeley that meets and needs the expectations of its community members, city staffs and others, and those who serve for all the boards and commissions? Need to know and understand the expectations of those communities. I mean, to be honest, it's, to me, it's a good statement, I'm not sure why it was taken off. It kind of develops what the strategy is.
Well, I, I might put a comment in here that it's. We're playing on a playing field here, where there are rules. There is some room for adaptation, and that's what this document is providing, a little bit of creativity to adapt within it, but the reality is, we have, we have statutory processes, we have ordinances and whatnot, that lead us down our path of what we have to do and how we do it. The, this plan cannot usurp those. It can, it can enhance those, and that's what it's meant to do. There is a community outreach process in everything we do, in that we post our, and we post them now, like even better than we used to, when it was just like, here's our meeting and here's our agenda. I mean, but we, we do reach out on each and every matter related to the planning commission in an open and transparent way. Now, this plan helps us get into some of the crevices where people are not as engaged in that traditional outreach, and also provides an opportunity for feedback, but not every situation requires a complete town hall to discuss, and if any individual, there is an open mic at every meeting that allows for comment outside of what we're already discussing, and then, of course, on every agenda item. So there is input opportunities, more than one, on any given item. So I think this plan is meant to enhance, give some ideas, some creative opportunities about what might work in Berkeley, but it cannot become the manual that we must do each and every one of these things, because if that's the case, then we put it in ordinance and we follow it.
I, I mean, my question was, we crossed off one of the lines in here.
Because you can't make, you can't make guidance. Yeah, because it's, because it's, because I think it was like superfluous, if that's the word I wanted, and that might not be the right word, but I think it, I, I think it was unnecessary to say, like, that's the whole idea of the plan, is to state it again and again, and it's, it's in here, I think, otherwise, so that was my point.
Okay.
I had several comments on here, and, and I agree with Ms. Buckler on this first paragraph, that last line. My notes were here, it's a deleted period, good period, so I think it's, I think it is, you're exactly right. It's, we're repeating ourselves several times with some of these comments. On the flow charts near the end, where does the design review board come into these flow charts? Should that, that's our next item, I believe.
Yeah, they'd have to be added and updated.
That will be added.
It'll be a five-second tweak of the document when.
These are the old ones that we prepared last year.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Okay, so you're aware of that, that at some point?
Absolutely.
Okay. And there may be some arrows we need to add. Under postpone, it goes back up to a certain point on the flow chart, because postpone isn't the end. Okay, so that's really all I had to say on, I believe, on the flow charts, and I didn't realize these were just, you grabbed them from the earlier. Okay. So they will be updated as we proceed through this.
Absolutely, yes.
Perfect. Anything from anybody else?
Question.
Mr. Trotto.
The DDA has like a preliminary review, does that need to be put on any of this?
The ZBA?
The DBA.
DBA, that's what I was just talking about.
DDA, that's the next item.
DDA, okay.
That's the next item.
That's what you were just saying.
Saying it kind of, it should be somewhat into the flow chart a little bit for an area that's in the downtown development.
That's going to have to be added.
After the ordinance is passed.
Are you referring to the design review board?
No, the downtown development.
Or the DDA? Well, that's the design review board.
That's, okay.
And that's the next item.
That's the next item.
So, Mr. Chair.
Chicken and egg.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It says the chicken and egg, so we need to approve that ordinance.
Well, this is still dra, we're still drafting.
Right, and then the ordinance needs to be passed, and then after, yeah, exactly.
Mr. Chair, I propose, with, with the feedback I received tonight, I can make these tweaks and get a draft out to the commission pretty quickly, and if, if the commission is comfortable, my recommendation would be we, we hold some type of extended public comment at next meeting, or if, if the commission wanted to do a, a work session, I don't know, I'm kind of throwing out ideas here, but some type of extended public comment, so the, you know, the public has a chance to, to weigh in and, and tell us what they think of, of the draft.
I think everything was fairly minor we talked about. I, I agree on the, especially table one, I think it, the only big deal here is to get rid of that always under planned unit development. I, I think that's the biggest deal that we, we talked about, and I think we all agree on that, or the people, the people who spoke on it do.
But I, I think we still have an opportunity to get comments from the, from the community tonight.
Well, if the community would like to talk, here comes the community.
Hi, Annalise Petrus, I live on Franklin at Berkeley. I did have a couple comments about the participation plan. So I guess my first question would be, would it be possible to add in a timeline of, like, when is master plan being done? Like, what months are the, is that planned for? And, because I think if the whole point is to try to get people involved and get, get information to them, like, we need to give them a heads up, hey, we're planning on doing this in December through February, or whatever it is, and just a streamlined of, it sounds like there's several goals, and if we could just put that together as a flow chart or a timeline in this, I think it, it makes it helpful to inform people.
Mr. McLean, if I may, do we have a, we have a very, very sketchy timeline, and that is a long process, and I don't think we have.
We do, I've, I've communicated in a memo to the city manager.
For the master plan, I'm talking.
Yeah, I'm recommending that there be some type of, you know, committee between city council, planning commission, possibly DDA to discuss scope of work for the master plan. The, the DDA is undertaking, you know, a comprehensive downtown master plan, and so one of the, the big concerns I have is, is that we don't have a duplication of effort or, you know, conflict between those two plans. So I think in the near term, there's going to have to be some type of committee of, of various boards and, and commissions to determine the scope of work, probably going to be after the city, where we have the, the ballot questions coming up in November, so that's, that's going to be a high priority up until the election. So I'd imagine after the election is when we'll be able to start talking rough timelines for, for scope, scope of work for a master plan.
And we're talking a long lead item here, and from, master plan's been involved, been involved with the past. Eventually, there's a expected or an anticipated schedule, but we're not anywhere near that yet, but well-taken at some point.
But we, we will, we will do our best to.
But that's not something that goes in.
Make sure that that word gets out, you know, well in advance, so that, this is obviously one of the, one of the scenarios where we would need, you know, an advanced, advanced methods of, of communication, you know, for the master plan.
So I guess what seems to be ideal would be to outline that and communicate that to the community, that there's a goals, an RFP, a this, that, like, what is the process? And if we're not informing people, we're, we're just supposed to show up in two years? I mean, that, it's, I think the whole point is the participation.
There will be, there will be a wide.
So without a timeline, I don't think it's, you know, it's very effective.
Ms. Buckler's kitchen.
I'd like, yeah, I would like to respond to that. Well, to put an exact timeline in this document is, the, the document's meant to extend beyond that process, first and foremost, it's meant to be, it, it could certainly put some example timelines in there of the length of time it takes to do a master plan and/or, but we also have so many other things on the plate, and I brought this up on many occasions, that there needs to be kind of a master straw man, or whatever you want to call it, you know, some kind of critical path document, or timeline developed that talks about the master plan, the redevelopment-ready community, the complete streets, the downtown development program, all of these things, and how they intersect and how they drive each other, and I, it is, everything that gets done as far as an RFP for the, the, for the master plan, once they determine what that scope of work is and they send it, that's all public. That's, it's posted on the website, the selection of the consultant, and then, of course, there'll be presentations made once the consultant has been seated, and the consultant comes up with what they think that critical timeline's going to be and how it's going to work, and that, of course, will all be presented in these, you know, this environment, either the city council, or us, or both of us, or joint session, or whatever. So all of that will be presented when it's ready. The, the city manager doesn't create that timeline yet, it's too premature in the process, but it will all be laid out very transparent for everyone, and it will be dependent on all these other goals that the city puts, and, quite frankly, the budget that is. the budget that is assessed, you know, and allotted. But we also have a statutory requirement to complete this by a certain date, I think, certain? I mean, I can't remember, it's like every 10 years or whatever it is. So we, we have a requirement that we have to get it done. Whereas, and then, I don't know what the other things on how they feed into it, complete streets and, oh, Main Street, I forgot about Oakland County, Main Street. So all these other things that fit into it. But there, first, there has to be enough resources to help think that through and kind of determine what's driving what. This is a, this is a multi-phased project, if, for lack of a better term, with, you know, multi-disciplines and dimensions to it. And I think it's fair to say, like, a master planning process takes two years.
Okay, so then...
But we don't know when it's gonna start. Because the resources haven't been allocated, I mean, the budget's there, but the RFP hasn't gone out.
I think they did a budget, so.
We haven't even determined scope.
You request an amount, so how come there's not a timetable with it? It's curious.
A timetable for that doesn't belong in this document. A timetable belongs in the contract that's eventually executed with the consultant that will develop the plan. And then the guidelines that we have in this document that we're discussing tonight will apply to, to that timetable. But, you know, the timetable is too specific for a document like this. I hope you heard my comment, I think that we need to clarify who makes a decision about these methods and, and at least in general terms, when those decisions are made to employ augmented communication methods. I think that does need to be in the plan, but we can't put, you know, a timetable for this project or that project in this document. I don't think that belongs in this document.
Okay.
And basically, it's premature to start a timetable on the master plan. It will be developed when it comes, but we're just not there yet.
And the scope can also determine the timetable. If the scope's really small, it's a shorter timetable. If there's a lot of things we're trying to accomplish with it, it could be a longer timetable.
So I guess the bottom line of my concern is that I see lots of community efforts for all sorts of things like road diets and community centers, but the master plan is mandated. That must be done. That is all of our property and our, we're all stakeholders in that. And we don't even have a deadline.
We haven't started yet.
Or a path, or a path to it. That, like, why is there so much community distraction of complete streets, redevelopment-ready? These are not mandated things, but the master plan is.
And those will all be components of the master plan or incorporated into the...
A road diet is not a requirement to it. A DDA guideline is not a requirement to it, it's augmented, but the master plan is. And that's the concern is that you can't have a dinner if you don't make a grocery list first. So where's the grocery list? But as, as for the...
Not there yet. We're, that's what we're working on right now.
Budget has been allocated, there is a, there is an effort to bring together the parties that need to create the RFP to contract or to, you know, to send out, to get bids from whatever planners are, are most interested in, qualified to provide those services. A selection process will take place, there'll have to be a meeting of the minds and they'll select someone and then a timeline can be developed. And yes, these are, well, I'd like to think we're very unique here in Berkeley, but we're not. Every community goes through some kind of master planning process. We do not have the in-house resources to do it on our own. Some communities do, they do it rather routinely, they have a deep bench of staff with that experience to do it. Berkeley does not. We have staff that can drive the wagon, but we need horses and somebody to lend us a, you know, a buckboard and some wheels. So that's what the consultant will provide for us. We are, everyone is aware, but the budget was not available until this 2018, 2019 fiscal year to start, and then it'll go into the second year. So we just, okay, I hope that makes sense.
Yep, that's one of my concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Moving along.
So did we decide to, what we were gonna do with it?
Do you have any questions, Mr. McLean?
No, I've, I've got feedback on, on what revisions need to be made. And I'd like to get a revised draft out to the commission as soon as it's done, which I'd like to do it this week if possible.
Do you think we're set up for a public hearing next month? Or public comments? I guess, I wanna rephrase that, public comments next month.
I defer to the collective wisdom of the commission. However, I think if, if the commission is, is good with, with the revised draft that's gonna be coming, now I recommend, yeah, I think some period of extended public comment would be warranted for possibly our next meeting.
Okay. We have 20-something pages here and we're down to small items. If you can pick up those, pick up those small items with questions, as you, you have in the past, and let's hear what the public has to say about it. And that'll be our next draft.
Yeah.
And of course, the community is free to comment on the current draft of it because it is included on our website and there's a direct link to it. So all comments can go into Mr. McLean.
And once we get a revised draft, once the commission's seen the revised draft, you know, we can get it out there, you know, well in advance of the meeting, you know, on the website, Facebook.
You're almost, we're almost there, it's just a matter of fine tuning it. Thank you. Anything else on that? Hey, item three, Mr. McLean.
Item number three is a proposed ordinance for the creation of a design review board. As you're all aware, the Downtown Development Authority has invested considerable time and resources in creating design guidelines for new development. Part of the process for recommendations on design guidelines would be the creation of a design review board. The DDA director, her team and various members of city staff, we worked to create a potential ordinance that would establish the design review board, which would be a, a function of the city.
So there is just a small clarification, there's two ordinances that get created. There's a design review board that actually you guys don't see that goes to council, and there's the design review board review, which is what's, and it's very confusing. That's what's before you guys tonight because this is part, this is part of kind of your whole, it falls under, like, where your site plan review and stuff like that goes. So this, the council creates the board, okay? You guys don't create the board, the council creates the board. What you have to do is review the design review board review process, which then falls under zoning. That's what you're looking at tonight. Council, I know it's very confusing. Council will review the design review board ordinance next month or whenever you guys send this up to them, all right? But you're, you're reviewing the design review board review process, which is similar to your site plan review.
Right, which is the second sheet you sent yesterday or today, that superseded the, the second half of this. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
So it is confusing.
Can be.
Mr. Chair, if I have comments on the design review board portion, do I provide them to city council?
So it has to go to city council, they'll review it and then you could make comments there.
Okay.
Although I'm sure they'd love to hear from you no matter what.
Oh, they love having us here. So any comments on part two, design review board reviews, as it is so aptly titled?
I do, Mr. Chair, comments on that too. All right. I don't like the word certain projects in paragraph one, and then again, it's, I think we, well, it's referred to up, up in the design review board ordinance as well, but the, like, item two B, the project proposes an increase, okay, so it just says certain projects. So, and then it goes on to say under number two, projects that meet all of the following criteria should admit an application to the design review board. Item number B, the project proposes an increase in building size or significant change in facade as determined by the community development director or his or her designee. So is that the same standard for a site plan review? Or is this going to be a different standard? So if you determine it needs to go to site plan review now, and if it's in the downtown development area, is that the standard you're gonna use to go to this design review board? Number one. Number two, I'm a little concerned with the word certain and this kind of ambiguity because there could be, I don't know, some projects out there that the city's like, man, it's a really ugly building and I'd really like to see that changed. Oh, they want a new sign, so we're gonna make them go before the, the design review board, even though that would never have triggered site plan review under our normal criteria. But now it does because there's some vision out there and I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate because ordinances should be specific, there shouldn't be the ambiguity and it should never, ever, ever be left up to one individual because we are not a monarchy. So I'm, like, I, I think there has to be a standard in here, like, if it would trigger a site review, then it would trigger this. Or if you wanna lower standard, that's okay too, as long as everyone is clear what that standard is. But words like certain bother me.
Well, and to speak to your question, using an example of a facade change. A facade that's changing more than 50%, that triggers the, the site plan review process.
Okay.
And that's, that's a standard that's set, that's already set by ordinance.
So, so that could be referenced in here, that if it triggers, like, you know, reference the ordinance, number, code, whatever.
Yep, I would agree.
And then it triggers it here. Unless you wanna lower standard, and then I have, again, I have no problem with it as long as I am thoroughly, I thoroughly understand what that trigger is and it's clear and we don't end up in a, you know, some kind of a back and forth, you know, and lawsuit going like, all right, I changed 45% according to my, whatever. But I, I just want something more clear. And again, it can be lower if our DDA thinks that because the downtown, because the downtown is kinda special in these communities, we are special because we have one and we want to create a slightly tighter tolerance in, in that area, if you will. I'm, I'm okay with a, a more rigid trigger, like, for lack of a better term. My words escape me.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Richardson?
I too have concerns about paragraph two B. Increase in building size is reasonably precise criterion, although even that language could probably be tightened up a little. But significant change in facade is determined by community development director. I'm, I believe that that's too vague. I, I'm wondering how a developer or business owner that, that proposes a change is going to know, is going to have advanced warning, if you will, that it's going to have to go through a, a design review board review. There should be more objective criteria, I think this is what Ms. Buckler was driving at as well. So I would like to see two B criteria, more specific criteria in there so that the community development director just doesn't have to apply subjective judgment as to what's a significant change or what isn't, but is guided by a, a criteria that anybody can understand. Then as far as the review process itself goes, there's no timeline in there, there's no cutoff for the review, no 60-day, no 90-day, no 30-day. I would think it would be reasonable to have in the ordinance some provision which says that the board will convene X number of days after the, you know, after the, the design is submitted in an acceptable form to the community development director. I, I just think that's fair, again, to the applicant. And then as far as paragraph four goes, the, I'm sorry, paragraph five. Design guidelines are not compatible with current Berkeley zoning codes and ordinances in the DDA district. The approving authority may waive zoning codes and/or the ordinance provided or achieved design guideline recommendations. My question is, under what circumstances can the approving authority already waive zoning codes? I'm aware of some situations where the ordinances say that a standard must be applied unless the planning commission or city council decides otherwise. Other provisions may not say that. So I'd like, I'm concerned that this might create confusion if it's compared with existing provisions for waivers or not, non-wavers. I, I'd just like that to be, that whole thing to be clarified. You know, I don't have any theoretical objection to waiving requirements if, if it's, if, if it's legally authorized to do that. And then one thing I forgot is to say what I'll say now, I, I agree with Ms. Buckler that I, I don't have any problem in a tighter standard for downtown development, building or, or facade requirements, a standard that's tighter than existing zoning would, would require. I don't have any theoretical problem with that. I'm not going to address what those standards should be, but I'm just saying if it's desirable to have tighter standards, I'm not, I'm not going to object to it. I just think that the language here needs further clarification.
Can I speak to the, the one question you had was, you know, or, you know, how often will it meet? The design review board ordinance actually says that, you know, explains how the committee or the board is set up, how often it meets, it would meet, just like every other board, it has a scheduled monthly meeting date that it's required to meet on unless there's nothing to review. So there is a scheduled, there will be, in that design review board, you know, it's, it meets on a regularly scheduled schedule.
Well, is that in here?
That's not in this, it's, it should be in the design review board.
I don't see it, I'm looking at it.
Not in the design review board ordinance language.
I, I think it would be appropriate to have it in this part of, this ordinance as well because this talks about process. You know, this is, this is the process, that's an element of process.
And then just, were you talking about in five? So you guys want like specifics as to where the design guidelines and the ordinances are not compatible because there's so many? So do you want, to have that spelled out?
I want to be sure that waiving zoning is okay and doesn't conflict with other ordinances which may not allow us to waive zoning because of the way they're worded. I, I just, I, I'm in the dark about that.
Mr. Chair, the zoning enabling act specifies, you know, the process for, I wouldn't, you know, necessarily waiving codes, but it talks about deviations, you know, whether it be variances or, the zoning board of appeals and city council have, I believe are the only two bodies that have that authority, if I'm recalling my zoning enabling act correctly.
So then this body would not have that. Or, or when you talk about authority, that, those are the bodies you're talking about?
They should be more specific, the way I read this is, I feel like we can change zoning on a whim if it's a DDA project.
This cannot supersede...
That's just the way I read it. As an approving authority, I'm an approving authority, so.
Yeah, John Steren did read this. We had significant discussion about this because of the issue with the fact that our ordinances, as you guys well know, are decades out of date. So, what happens? Do we wait two years to put this in place until we get those ordinances updated? We can't wait that long. So, how do you address this? And this is what John suggested. So, you know, how, I mean, we can tighten this language up if you guys give, you know, but this is kind of the compromise that we came to when we discussed it with John.
Well, if you did, you did. I'm just saying that, from my perspective, I want a little more assurance in here that what we're providing for is actually legal. And I guess, when we say approving authority, we mean the Planning Commission and the City Council.
ZBA.
And the ZBA. Well, first of all, spelling that out would help.
Okay.
And then, you know, language saying that, there's some stock language you can put into these things that say, you know, "Any language to the contrary and previously enacted ordinances shall be disregarded," or something like that. Maybe I'm being a little bit too lawyerly about this, but, but, but I don't want to create ambiguities where we don't have to.
I get it. I just, I just want to make sure when this comes back to you guys next month that I've got it as clarified as possible.
I read number five very similar, like, if it's in the DDA, eh, you can waive whatever.
Only, only against the design guidelines. So, that's like signage and building height and things like that.
And the problem with that, I guess, to me, is a guideline is like a best practice. So, this is what we'd like to see you do. And an ordinance is, this is what you must do. So, a guideline shouldn't supersede an ordinance. An ordinance is, is more important, how it's used is more important than how it looks at the end of the day. So, I think we have the ZBA for being able to waive codes, but I don't, I feel very uncomfortable with the idea that we write ordinances, but if it's DDA, then those don't apply. Or, I mean, the ordinances are there for a reason. If they need to be changed, clearly they need to be changed. But I thought, when we all met, the, what we were told is there weren't really that many conflicting, that would be conflicting. If there are a lot, then, to me, that's way more problematic.
Well, you could take a case in point, the most recent PUD, which, I mean, conflicted on almost every single level with the design guidelines. So, I mean, where do you, and if you want to give the design good.
Well, I mean, and a PUD is a whole different monster, though, right? I mean, that's kind of all about, and so that's the other avenue. You have a PUD where you can play with ordinances, and you have ZBA. So, I think they've already gotten two avenues.
PUD and the DDA.
To do that, what?
You could have a PUD in the downtown development area.
Absolutely.
100%, yeah.
So, I mean, they have two avenues.
But it still goes before the Design Review Board.
Sure.
So, the question is, do you want the design guidelines to have teeth? Or do we wait for, you know, two years? So, I think if we want to make these effective, and if we're looking at development coming in, and if we look at a history of development or facades that have happened, you know, while currently, ordinance might allow certain building materials that no longer are the quality that perhaps we want to see, or someone comes in and says, "Hey, look, I want to do all dark glass," which is probably, well, it's happened, you know, or do we want transparency? Do we want activated street fronts? Or do we want parking podiums? I mean, how do you guys decide until everything else comes into play? How do you decide? So, that's where our discussion with John and Kristen and Tim and Matt, you know, we said, "Okay, we realize there's going to be a time period where, you know, these are going to overlap." And we know it's a two-year process to get these codes and ordinances up to date. So, how do we address this? And that's where we came. And I think, to your point, we can clarify, but I'd hate to see you guys take that out, because it's.
I'm not recommending you take it out.
It needs to be just revised. I think it, you know, it shouldn't say "waive," because they should just go through the process, which is the ZBA.
When I read "waive," I could see what someone's proposing is more stringent, but the danger is, it could be relaxing something a lot, and a lot more than maybe what we all intended. So, maybe that's the fears that we're talking about.
Well, it could go either way. I guess, from my perspective, I just want to be comfortable that the, this will be an ordinance, too. So, we want to be sure that which, which standards apply to which projects. We want precision. If traditional zoning doesn't apply, we want to say that, and we want to make sure that we have the legal authority to say that in this ordinance. That's, that's all I'm saying.
And I think it's good, because the design guidelines are so thorough. I mean, yes, they are guidelines, but they're very thorough. So, they don't leave a lot of room for interpretation outside of a higher standard of design and quality building projects, and the things that were important to the public when, you know, we established, or when we went through that process, so.
Do you have any idea, I mean, has anybody gone through to see how many conflicts exist between our ordinances and the design guidelines?
Yeah, I actually started to, and then, when we got into the discussion of this process, you know, like with John and every, and Kristen, you know, we determined that really it didn't, you know, to go through and try to list out every place the ordinances disagreed probably was a little tedious. Signage, height, scale, building materials, setback, activation on the street front, you know. There's just, there's a lot of stuff that our ordinances don't address, which is why we have zero setback, for instance. We don't have zero lot line on, you know, the Bigby Building. I mean, if these design guidelines had been in place, it would have been simple to say, "Hey, no, you have to do, you know, zero lot line." But right now, the ordinance allows you to kind of put your building anywhere on your piece of property. Well, that doesn't activate the street front. So, that's an example, but, you know, there's, there's a few, because, once again, our ordinances are pretty outdated. Our signage ordinance isn't even legal, so.
We just, we agree that there, I agree with you that you, we shouldn't exhaustively catalog all of those differences. We just want to make sure that we just had a tiny little tweak to this. That just makes it so it's not as ambiguous as it sounds. And remember, it has to live without any of us into the future. So, you have to think of the person five years from now, when there could be a completely different set of group reading it, and how they're going to interpret it.
Well, and hopefully, five, you know, disappears once those ordinances come into, it come into best practices. Because what the design guidelines offer is best practice. What our ordinances don't do yet is do that. So, hopefully, within two years, this is just kind of something that then.
Like, I'm, I mean, when it said approving authority, I thought for a minute, they mean the Design Review Board? How can they be, how can they be approving?
They're not.
I shouldn't have to ask that question of myself. That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's all we're saying. It's just, it was very, it's very clear to the authors, but.
No, and this is the feedback.
Spinning the beach ball.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing everything everybody says, so that what we do bring back to you next time is what you guys need to see.
Well, it's not only us, but I think it's the applicants out there. They're going to be reviewing this.
Oh, 100%.
So, I agree with these two in regards to B and, to B and two C, actually, again, brings up, you know, Community Development Director is designee. I think what we need to do is set some sort of standard that has to be met, you know, whether it's 50%, 25%, and then it just triggers it, that they have to do it. I'd rather leave it out of an individual's hands.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I know we're not looking at the Review Board, the one that the council will do, but it doesn't say in there that the people have to be residents.
They don't.
Okay, so that's.
Because what you're trying to do there is pull in experts. So, for instance, you might have a developer that sits on there. I spent quite a bit of time talking to, oh, gosh, her name escapes me. She was the Planning Director down in Ann Arbor, when they took Ann Arbor, when they created their Design Review Board. There's multiple ways you can incorporate a Design Review Board. You can actually take the entire design guidelines and make them a component of the ordinance, which seemed excessive. Or you can create the Design Review Board and the Design Review Board Ordinance Review, or Review Ordinance, that then says, "This board measures it against the design guidelines." So, now you haven't put 114 pages of, you know, design guidelines into the city ordinance. But I spent quite a bit of time talking with her, and she's the one who helped us also kind of craft, this is similar to some of the language you see down at Ann Arbor. But she highly recommended that you pull experts from outside of the community as well as, I mean, if they're in the community, that's great. But if you really want to make sure that you're addressing the issues with the expertise that we're hoping to bring, then you might have somebody from outside of the.
Yeah, well, that was my concern, because what if you didn't have one of these five different professionals in your community? So, that was my quest, yeah.
Save those for City Council.
Yeah, okay.
I wonder, I wonder if citizens would be, not upset, but a little concerned if a majority of these people were not citizens of our community.
I don't think that you would find a majority of them would be. I think you might find one or two. But when we look at, we have great architects in the city. We have great landscape architects in the city. We probably don't have a developer in the city. And it's probably better to bring a developer in from outside, because then you don't, you don't, it does bring that outside perspective. But I think that you'll find the majority, and I certainly believe that council will want to place as many residents as possible.
I would think so.
That would help.
But that's not to say that you, if necessary, couldn't bring in somebody from the outside, which is highly recommended.
I mean, technically, you could have all five of them, but.
Yeah.
The probability is slim. More probable to get three or four.
Yeah, I think you'd easily have the majority of them from, within the city.
I think our comment should be on the Design Review Board review process, since you can't really.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Mr. McLean, item number four. Oh, I'm sorry.
What?
Do we want to have a, go ahead, please.
Definitely.
Annalise Petras, I live in Franklin. So, I guess I have a lot of questions with this. First of all, being, are the, it sounds like the guidelines are strictly a document. They're not zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Correct.
The DDA district boundary, is that part of the zoning ordinance? That that is a district? It's an overlay district in the ordinance?
Overlay district.
Okay. So, I think the challenge is, like in two A, it doesn't talk about the district boundary. Maybe that's a typo. And then, this seems to be a stopgap measure until all these other companion pieces that'll be done at some time. What concerns me is that I really like the guidelines, but there's no criteria here that says you have to meet one of the guidelines, 50% of the guidelines, all of the guidelines? Why would one, one business may do one thing, and the other one may do four things and not get a recommendation? I mean, there's no, there's no criteria here that's outlined for an applicant other than good, good faith. I think that some threshold needs to be somehow delineated. The other thing is with process, I mean, where is, where is the steps outlined that you have to go to DDA first and have had their meeting? Okay, so then, is it just a letter that's provided to the Planning Commission? And what if that letter doesn't happen before it comes before Planning Commission? Is that after? This isn't cooperative. It, it, it has to, if it's going to be another body, it needs to be designated, their steps in the process. Otherwise, we're going to have just what happened with Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, that they're making a comment, "We're approving a site plan" that doesn't have the water retention worked out. And in good faith, they're going to come back and do that. So, with the DDA guidelines, it's all very aesthetic. I mean, I have been to way too many Planning Commission meetings where I could see that it's very possible the DDA may not endorse something, and the Planning Commission would, or the opposite. Like, it, it seems like it's, it's not worked out enough to be incorporated, and its only measure is a stopgap. So, if that is the case, it needs to have a sunset date on it. Cannot go on for more than two years. I mean, the right way to do it is, as was described, the guidelines become the ordinance. Like, that just needs to be the, the way to do it. And rather than the stopgap that could go on for years and years and years, that, that seems like this needs a lot more tooth, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. McLean.
Item number four, bringing back the proposed ordinance for exterior appliances. Once again, I've made a number of revisions based on feedback received from Planning Commission. Also had some conversations with Commissioner Trotto, who's got a construction background and probably a lot more know-how about the noise that would be generated by exterior appliances. So, we provided some examples of specs for generators. And that was included in your packet this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? Ms. Kessler.
I'm wondering, if we are setting rules for being able to put this in a side yard, why are we having property owners, neighboring property or owners sign off? I mean, we're saying, if you meet all of these requirements, you can put it there. It seems to me like that's just a step that's not necessary.
And that's, that's something, obviously, that can certainly be removed as well. I don't disagree, but I will, you know, I will defer to the collective wisdom of the commission.
Well, it actually should be something that's your priority. If you have a neighbor next door that doesn't want to have a generator sitting there, look out your kitchen window and see a generator sitting there. That's something you probably wouldn't want to see. Please say yes, you can go ahead and do it. I don't have an issue with it, but.
But again, I don't like the idea that, as a purchaser of a home, it's grandfathered in, and I don't want it there. So, I don't agree with that property owner making a decision in perpetuity, because that's kind of how it works. I'd rather see us do what, like we did in section 138, which is set a setback, and if it doesn't meet that requirement, it can't go there. Because there are some lots in Berkeley, in some, in some of the neighborhoods, that it can happen, and it's going to be, potentially, 20 feet away from your house. It's not going to impact you that much. But if it's a five-yard setback, and you have a 10-yard. But if it's a five-yard setback, and you have a 10-yard setback, or 10-foot setback, it's impacting you much more. Or even if you, it's a five-yard setback, and, and your house happens to be, you know, an older property, that it's less than 15 feet between the two houses, it rarely impacts you.
Ms. Buckler?
That's my feeling.
I agree that there should be a standard, and no need for a neighboring property sign off, because there should just be a standard. I also, I don't really care what the equipment can do or not do. I think 70 decibels at 23 feet is too loud. I would be very unhappy with that next to my house. I'm sorry.
Since most of our houses are 15 feet apart.
I don't even have 15 feet. I have my, all maybe 15 feet. I have my driveway in three, so I have like 12 feet. Yes, 12 feet, 40 feet. So I, I really think there just needs to be a standard for these. Okay, so this is not a house that has to have an electrical system in it, and possibly an air conditioning system because of our, you know, it doesn't get hot in the summer. This is a elective appliance, okay? If you have a medical condition that requires some type of, you know, then you need to live in a house that supports that. I understand, but the point is, this is an elective appliance, and it should go where it can go according to the ordinance, period. I don't think there should be variances for it. There shouldn't go in side yards. They're loud, and they're, I, I'm sorry. But until they come down in volume and in annoyance factor, I don't think that we should make, make it easier to put them in. It should be a burden to put these things in. They're, they're just going to fill the neighborhood with noise. Especially in the testing period. I don't know how long they test them for, 15 minutes, an hour, who knows? I don't know. I just know I'm going to have an outdoor barbecue, and my neighbor's going to have it going in the middle of my dinner when he's testing it. And I, I think there just has to be a standard, and people either meet it or they can't meet it. Because it's not, it's not something that they have to have to have. Okay.
Anybody else?
I do kind of, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do agree that it being 23, being measured at 23 feet seems odd to me, because you're talking about the next window. Like, you're measuring it from the middle of their house or from the street? That, it seems to be a pointless part at that point. Either measure it from where the next house, you know, what normally the next house would be, or don't measure it at all. But 23 feet away seems arbitrary. Too far away.
Mr. Richardson.
I got, I got on the internet this afternoon, and I tried, I tried to find some information about how loud these things are at, at one meter or 10 feet.
I'm not going to get that.
You cannot find that information, is that what you're saying?
No. Yeah. Standing next to your lawnmower is what it basically is.
You'll have to speak up. I'm, I'm having an hearing difficulty tonight. I'm sorry.
It's essentially standing next to a lawnmower.
At, at that distance?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the 23 feet, that comes from, that's basically an industry-invented benchmark, is it not?
From their specifications that are published on the internet.
So, yeah, I get that. I, I am just not able to accept having these devices in side yards. I, I, I think that if, for some reason, you cannot place it in your backyard, and I, I can't imagine why you can't do that, other than you don't want to. But if you can't do it, then seek a variance from the ZBA and explain why it's a practical difficulty, unnecessary hardship, et cetera. I, I just think it's going to be too much of a nuisance factor in neighborhoods to put these things in side yards. And I'm, I'm opposed to it. I'm not opposed to either placement in the rear yard, or the, the decimal standard may, may... I understand this is logarithmic and not, not arithmetic. So a 10-decibel lower limit would be a significant reduction in noise. It may not even be feasible. But I guess I, I guess I'm not adamantly opposed to the 70 decibels at 23 feet. But I, I am opposed to side yard placement myself, because I just think it's too noisy and too much of an imposition on neighbors. And as Mr. Merritt points out, it's, it's like a forever thing, you know? One neighbor may not mind, the next neighbor may mind greatly. And noise is subjective to begin with. Decibels are not, but noise is. And I just, I'm sorry, I, I just, I can't go along with side yard placement. But I think backyard placement is, is okay.
Agreed.
Mr. Scher, just a quick question for Commissioner Richardson. Are you referring to all proposed exterior appliances, or you're just talking generators?
Just the generators, you know, it's, the, the air conditioning units are quieter.
Mr. McLean, I'm opposed to air conditioners and generators.
That was going to be my next question, was...
You know, Mr. Richardson said everything I was going to say, more eloquently, of course. But we're going through all kinds of gyrations to try to make this fit, and it doesn't.
Right.
I think the right thing to do, and we said this, I think people have said this in the past, it's the good thing to have an ordinance, what these appliances are, the generated air conditioners, so on and so forth. But they don't belong in side yards. If there's some reason it has to go in a side yard, that's what the ZBA is for.
That's right.
I agree.
As far as air conditioners go, isn't that, isn't that cat out of the barn? And, and isn't, isn't it more likely that there would be a need for a side yard placement for that type of...
Not necessarily.
No, they're smaller.
What about the positioning of, of the rooms in the home, though?
No, goes the furnace.
Goes the furnace, which is in the basement usually.
Or we're talking about whole, whole house?
Right.
Now, not, not room air conditioning units?
Room air conditioners, known as window shakers,
Yeah.
are a different animal.
Yep.
And like I've mentioned before, my portable generation is a different animal.
Yeah, that's a different animal.
Right. It's very loud, but...
But to, to speak to that, the, actually, the, the air conditioner is in the side yard is a little more common. And that's something, there was, was a policy that was started by previous administration back in, I think it was the 90s.
And earlier than that.
Possibly, yes. Permitting air conditioning units in, in side yards, as long as the neighbor signs off on it, which...
This is that toll this developed.
Right, and it's, that's not the best way to go about it.
No.
So I, I agree that...
Because there's nothing now to prevent somebody, they've got their unit in the side yard.
Right, the proverbial cat, you know, maybe...
Bring a new one in and put it right in the same place, even though it's against, you know, if we make it against ordinance, they have to move that unit.
And, you know, the, the proverbial, you know, cat may be out of the bag, you know. However, the policymaking body, you know, has the authority to change ordinances.
Absolutely. Anybody else over here?
Yes.
Ms. Shadle.
What's the difference between 65 decibels and 70? I'm not sure. But somewhere in my mind, there's a, there's a difference there.
Yeah.
Well, there is, and, and like I said, we're, we're trying to craft this to make it work. And it's 70 decibels now at 23 feet. Well, we don't have 23 feet in 95% of the yards in town.
Agreed.
Some do.
Agreed.
So we can, we can put any decibel number we have. 65 at 23 feet seems to be the industry standard. Where it came from, you know, at five feet or six feet above grade. That's an ASTM standard of some sort, I would imagine, how it was tested. But it just doesn't fit.
Well, I think, you know, again, the five decibels versus we're increasing the decibel level, and we're also increasing the distance, which is more of a concern, right? I mean, we're increasing both. It's not like we're saying, you know, higher decibel at a shorter distance, right?
Well, we're zoning them out of existence, basically, or through ordinance.
Right.
No, there's, there's houses that can accommodate these.
Absolutely.
I mean, yeah, we're just, we're just, I think we're just getting to the point where it's no side yard. And, you know, we can still put a decibel limit on it, that's fine, even if it's in a backyard, because, you know, we certainly don't want something the size of a truck in the backyard that, you know, I'm not sure what level of power is needed in a, I don't know. You don't know. I mean, look at the guy in Troy who did the, what, 16-car garage or something, because the ordinance, because the ordinance wasn't specific enough, and it allowed it.
What are you doing inside that house?
Yeah, I don't know. Grow lights? I don't know. Come November, all bets are off.
Well, Ms. Buckler, I would imagine in the case of needing a generator, your neighbors would pay you a lot of money if you had the capacity to support several neighbors.
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's like you have to think, you have, you can't just look at the end point in an ordinance. You have to go two, three steps beyond, just like we did in the design development. And you have to think about how this could be applied, how it could be twisted, and how, what is the protection of our community and the standard that we want to set? And how could it be, you know, what malfeasance could take place? I mean, I don't like to think that people think that way. But if it's open and not specific, then you just leave something for somebody to drive in and do whatever they want, so...
I don't necessarily have an issue saying that the generators need to be in the backyard, and there's no side yard, you know, allowed or permitted. I guess I have a question about if we include air conditioning units in that same language. How, how much of a burden is it to move the location of a current condenser for a current resident whose air goes out, and they're calling emergency service nine times out of 10 and saying, I need a new, a new condenser?
Typically, not much.
Would we require under our ordinances replacement? And I know I'm making analogy to other ordinances. If they have an existing location, would we require them to move it? If it, if it, I mean, that's a maintenance item. They put it in a new...
And I would need some guidance from the city attorney as to how stringent we can, we can apply that. I think we could apply, you know, things like maintenance, you know, replacement. You could argue if you take out an existing, if it becomes non-conforming, to place it in that spot again would create a new non-conformity.
Right.
That's already non-conforming. Right, right, yeah, so...
It's the same if you take a deck off.
But are you saying as a grandfather?
Because it's a new unit.
Right, i- i- if you have to replace them, yeah, you'd be removing the existing. The non-conformity's gone, but to place a new one there would be a new non-conformity.
Right.
Right.
Because it is a big deal to move them.
I mean, that's my question. What's, what's the burden?
Piping and electric.
But if they're putting in a new one already, it's, I mean, it's...
Typically, that's not done with maintenance, though, would be my, my supposition. It's done on an emergency basis.
As the chairman, I'd like to know the answer to that.
Future fixing and not getting a new one on an emergency basis.
You have to rerun the refrigerant lines, all the electrical.
Right.
You have to have some sort of a location you can put it on, some kind of a pad to put it on. Yeah. There, there is more to it than that. And there is, I mean, my old house on Bakers, I can tell you that the furnace was at the front of my house. For me to run it to the back of the house would be a large cost.
It's a choice you make.
And I would say that...
But it wasn't like I installed it, though, either.
Right.
I think a lot of the ZBA cases said that they had full decks back there, and then, you know, and then their driveway. So that was part of the reason that they had no place to put it. But if you're emergency having to move it, then you're, you're having to tear out part of your deck or whatever else, too, which does propose a...
Then the most recent ZBA case on generators, the hardship presented by the applicant was the fact that they had flooding issues in the rear yard, so that's why they were seeking a side yard placement.
Put it on a rack.
That's right. Stick it up, put a thicker pad.
That's not, that's not hardship.
That's not hardship, yeah.
Raise it up.
I had to build my patio around my, my air conditioner.
I don't know. I, I guess I would be more comfortable if there was some kind of grandfathering for the current air conditioning condenser units.
Yeah, because someone replacing an old one is certainly going to be a better situation than that.
Right.
That fan, you know, sound like an airplane prop, and you put in a new one, and it sounds, I think your neighbors would be happy.
I recently had mine replaced, and they wouldn't easily be able to put it in my backyard. Again, the refrigerant, and I have a crawl space half and a basement half, and it would have been more of a burden to do it. I, I understand that's my choice. The air conditioner was there. It was old when I bought it, the house. I had it updated.
Now, when I say it's your choice, it's your choice to install one where you don't have one.
Sure, but again, this is existing.
If you need to replace it, it, it is big. It's a big deal, so...
But question going into your new one, is it much quieter than the old one?
It is much quieter. I can barely hear it.
I can tell you from my neighbor's perspective, they're jealous of my KAC unit, and they've actually told me that. They make more noise on their unit behind their house than they do from mine sitting on the side of my house.
Okay. Do you have direction on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that's it. Liaison reports?
Nothing from environmental this month.
I forget who, I forget who belongs to who.
Nothing from ZBA.
Okay, thank you.
On Chamberlain, I was unable to attend.
Okay.
But I would assume they hashed all the events they've recently had going on.
So you think Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, not really. They did hold a bond information meeting, pretty well attended. They had touch a truck, December 10th will be before them, but the holiday party for the seniors. There is a proposal coming up in November for a new community center. Your Berkeley, Your Vote is the website you can check for more information about the bond. And the Parks and Rec friends are looking for ideas on projects to do next season, I guess.
I don't know if our chairman attended the city council meeting. I did notice that they had an ordinance that affects us. They made some adjustments to appointments and qualifications for the planning commission. Just clarifications, it looks like. Okay. With that, staff or commissioner comments? We'll start on this side tonight.
I did attend the DDA meeting last week, or a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
There is talk about a new Mogo Bike System coming into our community. Hanging with Oak Park, Berkeley, Royal Oak, and Huntington Woods, possibly. Aside from that, just a lot of other accounting talk that I really didn't pay much attention to, I hate to say.
Ms. Shadle?
I'm all set.
Nothing?
Don't have anything tonight.
Nothing for me.
I do have one more coming up, the DDA. They put out a nice magazine that I had out. They have a nice centerfold brochure with the entire downtown city development. And it was, I'm not sure where you can get a copy. I should have brought it with me, but it was very well presented.
It's in the Metro Times, special, their special Made in Michigan edition, and we keep this in the franchise.
My only comment is our applicant here, you didn't have to sit through all this, but I know you're being polite, but...
I'm just trying to understand what Mr. McLean, what our next steps are.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to submit something out of turn.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you sat through all this and listened to our... Mr. McLean?
Nothing unless you have questions for me.
Do we have anything coming up next month, other than what we talked about?
Nothing presently. The deadline passed for, for October submissions, no site plans on, on the docket for next month.
Does our city council person have anything to add tonight?
How do you up any of your time?
Thank you. So with all that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sir moved.
Second?
Seconding.